Hey, everybody.
Hi Glenn.
Hi Sharifa, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Good, how's your family?
So far, so good.
Good.
Yours?
We're good, thanks for asking.
Hi Bianca, how are you?
Hi Sharifa, I'm good, how are you hanging in there?
Pretty good.
Good, lots going on.
Yes, I had my little girl to talk that she couldn't pop on camera because mommy was going to a meeting. Bernie was very nice to entertain her last week when he and I were having a Zoom meeting and she popped in and wanted to talk.
I think that's the new normal, right? We're all get, we're all seeing each other's children, pets, cats, you know?
Yeah.
Dogs barking in the background. That, that third wall is coming down.
Yes. Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Can everyone hear me or?
Yes.
Okay, great. And we're live. Yes, we're live, right. Hope everyone's well. Yes, how about you? Good, hanging in there like everybody else, I'm sure, you know? Are we waiting for a couple more people, Michael?
We're just waiting on Diana.
Oh, okay.
Here she comes.
Where's Sophia? Oh, there she is.
Do you need Sandy too?
Hello.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, that's better.
Bernie, perhaps we could just enter into executive session and then catch Sandy for when we come back?
Yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion to enter an executive session for the purpose of discussing matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, everyone. For the public, we're gonna leave this meeting and you're gonna have a blank screen for a while till about 7:20. Members, everyone, you all know now, leave the meeting and use that different link to enter executive session.
Okay, great, see you in a bit.
All right, see.
Okay.
Hello Sandy.
Hi there, how you doing?
I think it's the first time for maybe all of us seeing you.
I know.
I think it is.
Welcome, welcome.
Nice to meet everybody.
Yeah.
Now, will we be doing a roll call for all items that are being voted on?
We'll do a lot probably as a consent agenda, so we'll do a bunch at once.
Okay, but we'll do a roll call for each of them though? That way the public can hear the votes?
I usually just call the vote and a number of times. Time for all of us seeing you. Six, one.
I know, I think it is. Welcome, welcome.
Hi there.
Hi, does somebody, somebody's got?
Now, will we be doing a roll call for all items that are being voted on?
I think someone has the livestream on. Uh, we'll do a lot probably as a consent agenda.
Okay, but we'll do a roll call for each of them though?
Okay.
That way the public can hear the votes?
Call the vote.
Waiting for Glenn, right?
Yep.
Sandy, if you have the livestream in the background, it's gonna keep playing the echo.
Who's that? You can't think. Where's he? I don't see his picture.
Sorry, I'm just dislocating.
Oh, okay.
He's New Paltz Central School District.
It's like Oz, the great and powerful.
Here it comes.
All right, there's Glenn.
Glenn.
Welcome.
Thank you, Michael. You made it.
Hi Sandy.
Sandy, you're muted.
I'm muted?
Oh, you're good now.
Yeah, you're good.
There we go, hi there.
All right, everyone, I call the meeting to order.
Oh, shoot.
No, Theresa?
Hold on a minute, okay, there you go, I'm back.
I call the meeting to order. We acknowledge the Leni Lenape Nation on whose traditional territory we are gathering. We recognize them as the past, present, and future caretakers of this land. Sandy, could you please call the roll?
Uh, yes, Michael O'Donnell?
Here.
Glenn LaPolt?
Here.
Diana Armstead?
Present.
Dominic Profaci?
Here.
Sophia Skiles?
Here.
Bianca Tanis?
Here.
Teresa Thompson?
Here.
Uh, Dr. Joseph Spurg?
I think he's on mute.
Oh, is he muted?
Mm-hmm.
No longer, I'm here.
Okay. Um, Michelle Martoni?
I don't think she's here.
Okay, Sharifa Carbon? Here, here, okay.
Can I have a motion to accept the agenda changes as highlighted in yellow on the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, passes seven, zero. Item three, which is suspension of Board Policy 1510. Be it resolved that the New Paltz Central School District Board of Education, upon the recommendation of Bernard Joseph Spurg, interim superintendent of schools, hereby suspends the provisions of Board Policy 1510, Board of Education meetings regarding public meetings, including public attendance, and video conferencing for tonight's board meeting, and all future board and other meetings, and may also choose to suspend the provision in such policy regarding public expression in its discretion until Governor Cuomo determines that a state of emergency no longer exists in New York State due to COVID-19.
So moved.
Can I have a motion? Thank you Diana, seconds?
Seconded. Seconded.
Discussion? Uh, one item out of discussion here, the reason we are doing this is to accommodate what we're doing right here. Uh, some of the regulations in terms of the open, open meetings law were temporarily suspended while we're under a state of emergency and the suspension of those regulations is what allows us to have this video conference right now. So this is a resolution affirming that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes seven, zero. That brings us onto item four, which is the superintendent's reports and discussion items. Bernie?
Yes, thank you. This report is a bit longer than usual under the circumstances, I hope you will understand. Uh, to help collect my thoughts for this report, I did historical review of my emails. I found the first reference to the virus on February 5th. An advisory to school administrators from the State Department of Education. They said in that advisory, "At this time, there are no cases in New York State. The risk to residents and students is low. At this time of the year, there are many possible causes for respiratory illness. Therefore, there is no need to cancel school or social events and there's no need for students or school staff to wear surgical masks at school." On February 27th, Sophia sent an email to her board colleagues saying that, quote, "The coronavirus issue came up last night in our Legislative Action Committee meeting as prompted by a recent CDC communication mentioning impact on schools." On that same day, I sent out a letter to parents and guardians stating, quote, "Concerns about COVID-2019, the coronavirus, are deepening. Today, we participated in a webinar conducted by the New York State Department of Health. In the coming weeks, I anticipate a need to work closely with that agency in implementing their emerging guidelines. For the moment, those guidelines are identical to the basic health practices associated with the flu season." On March 3rd, the governor released a statement in which he said, quote, "This isn't our first rodeo. We are fully coordinated and we are fully mobilized and we are fully prepared to deal with the situation as it develops," unquote. On March 6th, KT Tobin advised the community that local officials, quote, "From the village and town of New Paltz with representatives from the New Paltz Central School District, SUNY New Paltz, and our fire, police, and rescue departments, convened after attending Ulster County's COVID-19 planning meeting." On March 8th, I updated my website letter to the community. Intending some reassurance, I wrote, quote, "As anticipated, coronavirus concerns deepen and now include a positive test result in Ulster County. I want to emphasize how swiftly state, county, and local officials have assembled to create a coordinated response to mitigate viral spread. This coordination means that any prospective decision about keeping schools open or briefly closing them for cleaning purposes will reflect shared judgment, known facts, and appropriate caution. Shared judgment, known facts, and appropriate caution will continue to guide our decision-making as we move forward," unquote. Based upon the feedback coming back to me, not everyone was reassured by that letter. On March 10th, teachers and administrators received the following from me. Quote, "Via this all-faculty memo, I am broaching the question of what can be done given our human and technological resources to maintain continuity of operations in the event of school closures aimed at mitigating viral spread." On March 11th, we formalized our own COVID administrative response team. On that same day, I wrote the following to New Paltz parents and guardians, quote, "Several days ago, I referred to coordination and shared judgment as the basis for any decision about keeping school doors open or closed. Area school district superintendents conferred today following the closure of the Walkill Schools. We were advised of the county executive's guidance that it would be premature for other districts to close in response. We accepted that guidance and are remaining open," unquote. After school on March 12th, I met with the high school faculty to discuss our circumstances and our intentions. Later that evening, members of the Village COVID Response Team received the following email on the topic of, quote, "Plans for school closing." Here's the text of the email. "This is a plan we need to implement now. Parents are already panicked and keeping kids home. We need to act now to prevent the spread more than what is probably already out there. Schools should not be the last holdout when Broadway, sports, and gatherings are shutting down and postponing," unquote. Pursuant to an order by the Ulster County Executive, schools closed at the end of the day on March 13th. Parents and guardians received another letter from me on March 16th, advising them that, quote, "It's possible that the closure will last longer and that we are using up emergency days and moving up spring break. In effect, we formally closed down district operations for two weeks with the exception of essential services such as food delivery." It was two weeks ago, a little bit over two weeks ago. In fact, we were scrambling during those two weeks. A team of seventeen or so building and district office administrators used that two-week closure to assemble a remote learning plan that was launched just this past Monday. "We define guidelines and expectations aimed to provide teachers with an initial basis to pivot from the regular order of bricks and mortar instruction to remote educational outreach delivered under conditions of great personal, community, and societal stress." In the document, the introduction to teachers began with these statements and quoting from the document that teachers were provided. Quote, "Teaching and learning in dramatically changed conditions require that we keep school differently. Nonetheless, familiar principles anchor how we will begin to adopt school to this unprecedented time of social and personal stress. We will be guided by these principles and we will collect feedback from our stakeholders about our success in using them. Looking ahead, we'll use that feedback to refine our work." Continues. "Emotional well-being for ourselves, our students, and our families comes first. Everything else, subject matter included, is second. Teaching is relationship-centered and emotion is the power that drives learning. In the present crisis, it is all the more necessary that we keep our students' social and emotional development strongly in mind." Unquote. "I've been told often that teachers are the strength of this district. Our remote learning plan sought to provide sufficient structure while at the same time relying upon individual teacher initiative. We encourage teachers to work in teams, grade-level teams, subject-area teams, support services teams, mental health teams, and so forth. In combination with the different learning experiences that are built into the K-12 continuum, our approach can be expected to result in much more variation than it typically occurs in a brick-and-mortar setting. This might be a concern to some who understand schooling as a uniformly measured race to the run, race to be run. Students are encouraged to, quote, 'keep pace, not fall behind, and if at all possible, to get out ahead.' If schooling was ever that way, it cannot be so now. We are asking our teachers to use our available means to connect with kids where they are and support their mental, social, and physical health as well as their continued academic and developmental growth." Where are we now? We are two weeks into providing needed food and childcare. Thanks are owed to Mike Robinson, Maureen Ryan, Guy Gardner, and John Bartels for leading our food bus custodial and maintenance service employees in this essential work. After the conclusion of our so-called spring break, we are two days into the reopening of the district via our remote learning plan. Thanks are owed to all building and district administrators and especially to Michelle Martoni, Kathy Kaufman, Scott Basely, Ricky Butler, Alex McKinnon, Sharifa Carbon, Ross Hogan, Sean Engley, Anne Sheldon, and Mario Fernandez, among others, I might add. We are two days into an equity effort to provide at least one Chromebook to households that have let us know of that need. Thanks are owed to Keith Basely and his technology team for overseeing this effort. Yesterday, Keith unveiled an impressive COVID-19 information and resources page of his own design on the district website. We are two days into the formation of a mental health team that organizes our nurses, social workers, and other support personnel in responding to our families in crisis. Thanks are owed to Michelle Martoni, Ricky Butler, Alex McKinnon, and Kathy Kaufman for leading this effort. Where do we expect to be? We anticipate that parents will continue to ask questions and express their concerns. They should do so first to their students' teachers, then to their principals, and then to the superintendent. We expect to use that feedback and improve our remote, our remote learning plan as might be required and we expect that it will be required. The governor's most recent executive order would reopen school on April 15th. No one with whom I've spoken expects that to happen. Today, Michelle and Keith sent the following email to all staff. It reads as follows. "In order to support you in your efforts toward implementing our remote learning plan, we are scheduling a superintendent's conference day for Tuesday, April 7th, that's next week. During this first week of implementation, we ask that you identify your learning needs and prioritize them. To this end, by Friday, April 3rd, we will ask that you provide us with feedback about the types of professional development you need. You'll be able to share that information with us through a brief survey which will be circulated by the end of this week. Also, if you would like to facilitate any remote learning session, please let us know so that we might invite you to a superintendent's conference day brainstorming and planning, planning meeting that will take place this Friday," unquote. An audio message on Monday I reminded our staff of the Latin root of the word educator. It refers to the idea of educing, to develop, to bring, or to lead out. "I know," I continued, "that we all believe in the importance of education under any circumstances. In conclusion, in the confining circumstances that we are now experiencing, the process of educating, of leading out, is especially important. And I would suggest that all employees of the district, in one way or another, are doing essential work." And that concludes my report.
Thank you Bernie.
Thank you.
Uh, that brings us to public comment. I will oddly check the spreadsheet. And we have no comments at the moment, but it'll be open and I'll check it again at the end of the meeting and we'll see if there's anything there. Uh, item number six, which is Board Communication Superintendent Search Update. Uh, our, our search for a new superintendent continues despite the disruption. We have been doing our interviews and our discussion meetings entirely via video conference, just like this, uh, with the board only. We're adapting our process the best we can. Uh, we are fully acknowledging that in the interview process, we're obviously lacking that in-person human connection and we're doing our best to work around missing that key component of the process. But we are still on track to make an announcement in early May in terms of the next superintendent with the intention of having that person begin on July 1st, 2020. We did receive forty applications for the position, which we narrowed down to eight semifinalists. We interviewed those eight semifinalists over three evenings from March 20th through the 24th. Following that round, we narrowed it down further to four finalists, the first of which we interviewed yesterday and the next three, which will conclude over three more evenings ending next Tuesday, April 7th. After that point, we will reconvene and we will discuss it further and hopefully we'll have a, we'll be in place to make an announcement uh, around May 1st. Does anyone want to add to that? Okay. Item eight, minutes of the meeting. Can I have a motion to accept the minutes of the regular workshop meeting of March 4th, 2020 and the special meeting of March 11th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes seven, zero. Can I have a motion for item nine, financial reports, to accept the Treasuries Report of February 2020 and the summary of revenues and expenditures of February 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes seven, zero. Can I have a motion for items 10 dot 1 through 10 dot 11?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes seven, zero. Uh, there's no old business, new business. Can I have a motion for items 12 dot 1 through 12 dot 2?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes seven, zero. Item 12 dot 3, request for approval of proposed grading policy. Be it resolved that the New Paltz Central School District Board of Education, upon the recommendation of Bernard Joseph Spurg, interim superintendent of schools, does hereby approve the following uh, proposed grading policy. During the period of school closure, teachers may respond to student work qualitatively through descriptive language and/or quantitatively numerically. Any needed summary of individual student standing will be done on a pass/fail basis.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Uh, one item I would put out there is that I think we should, the heading on it, should we call it proposed grading policy or now just grading policy? Because we're going to adopt something final.
Yeah, grading policy.
And, and just to be clear, the school closure, even though the, the physical space is closed, we are still in session.
Correct.
Also, uh, Bernie, how is our, the pass/fail policy, how would this impact at all any college-level classes that are requiring numerical grades to be given? Has that been a discussion at all, these institutions?
Um, this is a, a, uh, an approach that is consistent with the guidelines for teaching simply during this period of closure. It anticipates that this is, um, finite period of time at which point we would revert to the customary grading policies. This has not been cleared to go directly to your question with any institution of higher learning. But, um, I don't see that as an impediment frankly, because it's a temporary measure.
Okay.
Um, for what it's worth, you know, much of higher ed is moving towards pass/fail themselves for the remainder of the academic school year, so there is, there is, I think, some collective understanding. I don't know how that's going to be computed for, for high school seniors, but, um, I think there is, there's understanding around this.
Well, I know there are some schools around here, high schools, that are being told by colleges, local to here, that they want graded work and they want the, the college policies upheld as a college-level class, so it's just, it's worth a discussion at some point.
Bernie, to go to the question of the transcripts that would go out. Actually, we're not going to that question yet because we haven't faced the issue of what will we do with those transcripts if this closure runs, um, through to the end of the school year? Transcripts will have to be produced. There are discussions going on between, um, um, district office and Mario and Michael at the high school about how best to accommodate that. And there are ways of doing that that will satisfy, um, any college or university's requirement for a meaningful transcript, um, that, uh, summarizes a body of work. So that's really a separate question from what's being proposed here, but it's a hanging question.
Well, college applications are due on February 1st. So thankfully, everybody that's applied to college has
Right.
sent their application in and is either been accepted, declined, or is waiting for a response, so, um, you know, people, it's high school seniors shouldn't need their transcripts, transcripts to apply to colleges, that's over.
Yeah, I think that Glenn was referring to high school juniors and what?
Yeah.
Is that what you were talking about Glenn? Oh, juniors, oh.
Yeah, the concern, the concern would be more for the juniors than the seniors. And even 10th grade for some classes.
Well, what Sophia said is right, I mean, their colleges are all going to this pass/fail, um, situation right now. So I don't think that it's going to harm any sophomores or juniors to have something on their, you know, record that's going to be a pass/fail because college students themselves are going to be having that.
No, I'm not upset about the pass/fail at all, I think it's a great idea. But I know people who teach college classes in high school and they're getting what some grading what some grading policies coming out of schools are not compatible with what the institutions that are running these classes are, providing, you know, I just want to make sure when, you know, it sounds like we got that covered. I just want to make sure this is not a problem down the road because there are some problems with local high schools right by us. Would hate to see that happen here.
I mean, it's a similar situation. I mean, if it's any indicator that SATs are being canceled.
Right.
And that's, you know, really going to impact, uh, these high school juniors. So it's a, it's a shared question that everyone's going to have to deal with.
Right.
Any further discussion? Can I have a motion to approve the uh, resolution as amended? So we're going to remove the word proposed.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes seven zero. Item 12 dot 4, request for approval of revision to school calendar. Be it resolved that the New Paltz Central School District Board of Education, upon the recommendation of Bernard Josephberg, interim superintendent of schools, does hereby authorize a revision of the 2019-20 school calendar as originally adopted to move the following school recess days to make up for the days lost due to the emergency closure. Moving the spring recess dates of April 6th through April 9th and the district holiday of April 10th to March 23rd through March 27th. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes seven zero. Uh, any other discussion items? I'll make one last check for public comment. There are no public comments. Can I have a motion?
Um, just any other discussion? I just wanted to reiterate gratitude towards everyone that, um, uh, superintendent Josephberg named. Um, especially all those folks, including community members, including members of the board. Um, I know played a special part in food distribution and, and all of it, some transportation, um, everything. Um, it's not, it's, it, I think it really speaks to how public schools have become ad hoc first responders in their own way, and, um, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Also, adding on to, uh, what Sophia said, which, thank you for adding that, Sophia. I want to thank Bernie for doing what you've been doing, Bernie. This is, uh, you know, you came here as an interim and you're piling our district and through probably the, the biggest educational crisis faced in this country's history. So thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Bernie.
Thank you, Bernie.
Thank you so much.
Thanks to all of you.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, everyone, we are adjourned. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aye.
Bye, everybody.